All of the committee of the whole for Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. Rule call.
Parks.
Here.
And work on.
Here.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Here.
Banner.
Here.
Plan. Here.
Okay, let's start with department head reports and Patty, are you gonna do Jeff's at the same time? Okay.
Can you hear me, Taylor? Okay. Um, the E V charging station, there was a few quick updates for that. Uh, first, we have all of the E V car charging equipment installed, except for the charger that has a recall. Uh, we will get this installed once it's received. And as for our transformer for the site, there are seeing some further delays on that. Uh, possibly out to mid-September. Uh, I'll keep you updated as I learn more for Sulein Park. Unfortunately, Excel is continuing to see supply chain in impact for electrical builds on the primary and secondary sides of the chargers. Uh, the bathrooms are in place at Sulein and Michael Park. They're a nice addition to the area. Now, I believe we were talking about that today. I think Sulein is completely done. And Michael Park, not quite, they're waiting on Excel energy because um, there was some delays. Something about the paperwork, so that's coming up soon, I think. Um, there, we had an airport meeting on Thursday, August tenth. And we met with with Melissa Underwood of S E H and held our first stakeholder advisory committee meeting to discuss the master plan. And every stakeholder discussed needs for the airport as well as growth and desired items. Ultimately, the financial planning, capital improvement plan, excuse me, final master plan document and airport layout plan will be derived from the meetings held. Um, the project schedule should be complete mid-October of twenty twenty-four. And it should also be noted that the crack ceiling joint repair took place last week. And the micro-surfacing will take place next Tuesday and Wednesday. So that'll be done and then markings will take probably approximately a month after that, so it's all being done by Farner Asphalt. Um, capital improvement plan, again, myself along with staff and department heads are still working on an updated capital improvement plan for the city of Amory. The plan is a five-year plan and we should have budget figures for council moving forward twice monthly um, to start the budgeting process in September. Uh, on that note, I would like to finalize the budget on November fifteenth where we will hold our budget hearing. So citywide electronic sign, the electronic sign is installed. And I have Peggy Marsen, Taylor Larson, and Deb Trandom in putting information onto the sign. And I'm working with the electronic sign committee to finalize the bylaws for the sign um, and garner more donations for payment of the sign. Uh, we are putting sponsors logos up on the sign for those who have donated so far. And I believe this will draw more interest from the public to be included as part of the sign display. So the more sponsor logos they see out there, the more they're gonna say, hey, I wanna be part of that too, so. Um, employee reviews, I'm conducting reviews for immediate the city, immediate city hall staff tomorrow. And I will be conducting department head reviews in the following days after that. Um, all reviews are the basis for wage determination for the budget. And the coffee clutch, I've been attending that the first Tuesday of each month at nine o'clock, so uh, the citywide discussion takes place by me. And then I try to include a member of the staff to come with me from time to time. It kinda gives them some input as to what's going on. Broader perspective, what we do in city hall, so. And then Jeff's got kind of the parks and recreation response, cuz I know you asked about that, Rick, so. Um, in North Park, he said that they replaced the missing bolts on the playground equipment and re-inspected the other equipment. Um, he had an electrician out and he's waiting for his response and a quote to update the electrical, which I do have. Um, I think it was Jetta Electric, which he thinks should be done um, for the North Park um, uh, shelter. So that work needs to be done and that was just over two thousand for that. So he would like to proceed with that if you folks think that's okay. Um, the cracks on the basketball court are filled. Uh, Barber Park, they have not replaced the pavers yet, but they cleaned them up and will get them replaced. Uh, the board has been replaced on the pier. Uh, Michael Park, he had the D N R out for the dam inspection and they will not allow a fence to be put up on the east side of the dam and gave us mandate that we had to take down the existing fence across the dam walkway and lock the gates to stop or hinder the public from walking across the dam. So the old times when you used to be able to walk across here. Um, the reason for this action is the D N R thinks that if a flooding situation would occur, the fence would hold back debris. Uh, which in turn could cause a dam failure. Sulein Park, they're currently working on the park cleanup and waiting for Excel to hook up power. Uh, the crew did clean up the pavilion, the rafter area was full of cobwebs and debris, they cleaned all that up. North Twin Park, they looked at the dock again and are waiting for bids for a new dock for budget time. And there has been a trash can placed in the park, so. South Twin Park, the lifeguard stand and raft has been removed per safety concerns. And they looked at the signage and will order a new sign the next time they put in a sign order, so. Uh, the post will be replaced when we get time, they are getting bad, but the worst ones were replaced a year ago. And then he talked about the pickleball court has been crack-filled. Um, he gave the pickleball group a quote from Monarch on what it would cost to repave the court. And then Schumacher Park, the increase in the flower budget will have to be looked at during the budget process cuz they wanna get start getting flowers out there too. Um, and then he did meet with Cabin Watch Security Systems on August third. And we're looking at getting cameras installed at both new bathhouses, which I think we need to do because we don't want damaged new bathhouses.
Gotta do it.
And you'll have to decide whether you want to make the internet avail- available at Sulein to look at the cameras remotely, so that's kind of a discussion that we should really look at for further.
Thought we already had internet at Sulein.
We do, but it's, it was always placed in the city hall.
Yep.
Oh.
So I don't know, we maybe Chuck, we could put it at the fire hall or I don't know, there's different discussions that we could probably have and figure out what we wanna do with that, so. Anyway.
The budget question then?
I think so, yeah. So that's all I have, any questions?
Yes, um, you mentioned sponsorship for the sign and logos. Do you have a minimum that you're asking for from businesses for that, or are you just having any donation account?
I think we had, most people were giving, I think it was a hundred dollars up to five hundred dollars.
Okay.
So somewhere in that area.
That's just my marketing brain question.
Yeah.
Yep, that's great, thanks.
Is there a possibility of enlarging the lettering on the sign?
Yes, we can always make the lettering bigger.
Okay.
We're seeing they have our names.
Mm-hmm.
Well, when you're driving, excuse me, when you're driving, you're down and you see it there, but uh, when you're driving, trying to pay attention to pedestrians and stuff and you see that sign and there's quite a bit of words on it, quite a few words on there. Uh, and you don't get a chance to read them all because they are small, so.
Yeah, that's something, I don't know, Taylor, what do you think, we can?
Welcome to the future. We have to be very careful the way we set it up, otherwise it runs off the end of the screen even though it goes in over and then.
Hmm.
So it's.
Okay. Still learning.
Yeah, they're still playing with it, don't figure that out, I guess.
Suggested I scroll down, but.
Well, now.
I don't even have to wrap up.
And just one.
Better work.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ben, city administrator. Nope, Clerk Treasurer, I didn't promote you inadvertently, I just read the wrong line.
Been a while since I've been up here, it's kinda, I was telling Eric, it's throwing me off, so. At the June Committee of the Whole, I was in Green Bay at the Clerk Treasurer and Finance Institute from the League. And then, in the July Committee of the Whole, I was at the Clerk Treasurer Institute, which was online, but I had a late class from U W Green Bay, so I've done a lot of training lately. And actually, next week, I'll be going to Appleton for the Clerks Association Conference, so I can bank all the hours I need to get certified. Uh, we have been working a lot with Baird as well to get our capital improvement plan up to speed. I've been getting after Chuck and helping the police and Jeff get everything down, so we can have a good idea what we need coming here. Uh, I've been also waiting on the county for our emergency management plan. They were supposed to have our mini-plan to us in the middle of July, but they are delayed for whatever reason, so we're waiting for them to send us our specific mini-plan to build off of. And then, like Patty said, it is budget season, so I've really been working on that like the last two weeks, pretty hard hitting that, so we'll have hopefully a pretty good idea in September for you guys to work on and we can kinda start whittling away like we always have to. Your budget. Anybody have any questions? You look like you're thinking, Rick, you got something?
Not at all. You've been good, Rick, friend. Chief Thron. I ain't letting this guy off so easy, though.
Lots of questions.
Uh, that's all right. Uh, first off, I just wanna thank everybody that was out there and uh, came to our national night out. Um, glad the rain held off. Went home from work, looked at radar, yeah, didn't look pretty, but it held off, we had a pretty good turnout. Um, so it was, I think it was pretty, pretty fun, head by all, so, yeah, so thanks, everybody, for coming out. Um, as of today, well, when I wrote this, we had three hundred and five combined fire and first responder. I think they had like five calls today, four medical, one alarm, so I think we're around three hundred and ten combined calls so far this year and it's only August, so. Um, yeah, so it's been busy for both. Um, Monday, we had posi tests. Um, industrial safety came over and did posi tests on our mask and our packs to make sure everything was good to go, certified and everything worked right, so. Um, we did have a couple of masks that needed to get sent in, one pack I needed. Everything's under warranty, so. Um, yeah, and also on Monday, um, we had sixty-two kids come through from clubhouse, um, kindergarten through first grade. Uh, yeah, it seemed like those kids just kept coming around the corner. Yeah, they all had fun, it was a good deal. Um, I think it was on, I don't have Facebook, so I think it was on the school's Facebook page, some of the pictures that they took and stuff, so it was fun, so. And then also, on top of that, we had Chomp the Carrot was there at school doing, going through, yeah, so we have pictures taken with Chomp the Carrot, yeah, so it was a busy day for me um, on Monday. Uh, and now, next Monday, um, I've been, well, Rick knows about this. I got an I S O audit coming up next Monday, so. They sent me a bunch of forms to fill out and get everything in line for this audit for the I S O, so that's coming up next Monday at ten o'clock. Um, other than that, that's pretty much what's happening at the fire department. So I'm ready, any questions?
Nope, no questions, good. Thank you, Chuck.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
And Heather.
Hi, everybody. Good to be back, I missed home. Um, so August is our month that we reset from the busyness and non-stop action of summer reading and we prepare for the rest of the year. We were having a special focus right now on continuing collaborations with local organizations and building new ones. So to that end, I'm really pleased to share that the library is now going to be a satellite clinic for the WIC program in our area. So I believe we're working out the details, but probably one Tuesday a month, we'll have two of the study rooms set aside and then people can come and have their appointments and get information and services. So I'm, I'm really glad that we can bring that to Amory. Um, we had a total of a hundred and fifty-nine young people in our youth summer reading program and forty-six in the adult summer reading program, and that's on par with past years. Uh, and since we've last met, we've held thirteen programs with a total attendance of two hundred and ninety-two people. Uh, I've met with the team yesterday and we drafted programs and outreach services for the remainder of the year. And we've got lots of good ideas and projects, so we've got the book bike, it's gonna continue to visit the farmer's market on Mondays, that's been really popular. And we'll also be bringing it to nursing homes, clubhouse, community events, stuff like that. Um, we're gonna continue to work closely with the Amory School District, so we'll be making visits to the school. We've had school principals and teachers ask us to come and give presentations on hot new books to their students or bring things that they might not have in their school library. And we are also gonna continue having the tours where we bus kids come and we're hoping to expand to include all of the grade levels. Um, we're also going to have a really exciting author series come, probably in October, we're finishing the booking. But the school district, the Amory Library and the Friends of the Library are all working together to bring in three big authors and illustrators. And they're going to do a combination of events and programs at the school for the kiddos to attend. And then we'll have something in the community, whether at the library, the community center, or maybe the school gym or theater, it's open to all of the public. So these people will be giving multiple presentations and that's probably gonna be in the middle of October. So this is really, really exciting and it really helps get kids fired up about reading. They meet one author, they meet one illustrator and they, you know, their minds are open and they think this is something I could do, or this is something that I really like. So that's really exciting news and I'll have more info later. Emma, are you Services Librarian, has been here for almost a month now? And she is adding some teen evening programs and a Saturday monthly program to kind of round out our hours and when we can reach people. Uh, and she just had a really nice article written about her in the Free Press, so if you haven't read it, please do. Uh, Trevor is planning some monthly history talks with a local historian who likes to do presentations for free to the public. And we've got some movie nights coming up as well as book clubs, crafting classes, author visits. And then we're gonna continue, of course, our collaboration with the Amory Community Club and local businesses for things like Fall Festival, the Halloween trick-or-treating, the Holly Jolly Stroll. So these are all the things that we're looking at taking on for the rest of the year, so. We're busy, we've got a lot of plans, a lot of good ideas. Um, and also just an update, our long-range plan for the library is nearing completion, and so once I have that, I'll present that to all of you. And we're also um, really close to being done with our draft budget to be able to work with everybody in the city, so. Any questions?
Did you have good um, turnout or attendance um, last Saturday for the prices right for receiving donations for the library?
No.
Oh.
We had two twenty-dollar donations.
Sucks.
So it's better than nothing, but it wasn't a large amount.
No, but I congratulate you for actually finding a way to take part in that.
Yeah, thanks.
Yes.
I, I'm sorry, I missed it, it looked like it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, no, it's, it's good that you're trying to reach people in, in different ways, so that's great.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Taylor.
All right, after the last committee of the whole meeting, I finished up year two of the Clerks Treasurers Institute and I picked up a lot of really good information in some of the classes. I'm actually currently working on implementing some of the things that I learned and to try and update some of our records here. And then earlier this month, Peggy, Deb and I attended webinar training for the new sign. Peggy's been doing most of, most of the creating, but it has been quite the group effort to try and get that sign up and running and actually looking proper when people go past, so Peggy's done a really good job on getting those graphics up there and trying to make the text readable. It's a learning curve. Yesterday was August fifteenth, which means utility bills were due. If you have not already paid your utility bill, please do so as soon as possible. Late notices will be going out tomorrow and then disconnects, hopefully we don't need them, but they'll be sometime in September. Today, the recycling committee met to um, discuss their recycling master plan and they have a lot of really good ideas and things that they're working on. They actually have a blurb running on Channel Three right now telling people that the blue bins for recycling are behind the fire hall. If you didn't know that, make sure you're recycling in them. And they do empty them, me and Peggy looked today, four times a week, they, they're supposed to be scheduled to be emptied at in some way, shape or form, so Monday through Thursday. So try those days, if it's full, a different day, try going back. And then they're also, they Gloria got flyers from the county, um, they're recycling flyers, they printed off a bunch of them. We're gonna send those out with utility bills in October, since we have room for one extra flyer anyways. Pending that, we don't have something else that us go out, but, so they'll be going out with utility bills to help encourage recycling. And then they picked up, the, the county has bin things with plastic bags. So Mike picked up ten of those, and so hopefully those can go out on Friday for Music on the River and then again for Fall Festival. So, yeah, they've got a lot going on in their committee. And then next Tuesday, Ben, Peggy and I are attending, Polk County has election training in the clerk's office up there. We don't have any elections this year, but we could have one as early as February next year, depending on if we need that primary or not, so it's just around the corner. Um, and then I am also signed up for the Treasurers Conference, it's hosted in Wisconsin Dells in September, so I won't be at Committee of the Whole in September. But it's my first Treasurers Conference, so I'm really excited, I've never been to one of theirs, so. Hoping to get a lot of good information. All right, any questions? All right.
You know, do you know when they, I think Polk County is having a hazardous materials collection, has that been already, or is that?
Think hazardous collection was in August, but in October. No, I'm not, I think it's the nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
From one to five, they're doing electronic collection for free up to a certain criteria.
So layout one was this week.
Oh, it is only August, as far as this week. Here I am, best forwarding us, but yeah. I bet it is this week, I don't have, I don't have the flyer with me, but yeah. It, it was sometime in August, so it probably is this week. Here I am, thinking it's September already. But yeah, so I know our electronics are in October, but yeah, hazardous should be either this week or next week. So. Any other questions?
Check, check their website.
Yes, the website has a lot of good information out there, it has flyers out there, it has where the bins are located, it has all kinds of stuff. Oh. All right, anything else? All right.
Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is a proposed request for proposal for auditing services for the city. What you got?
Well, it's kind of the same story we've had and I don't, when did we do this last time? It was last year, late last year, I feel like. But we would like to put out an R F P for auditors again because we're having consistent issues. So we'd like to see if maybe a different firm would be a little more responsive and
I'm in favor of it, but I gotta tell you, the Glenwood City Paper came to our house today. And one of the lead articles is how disappointed, uh, I don't remember if it was Glenwood City or Boyceville, one of the two that, that don't have their, don't, still don't have their audited uh, stuff from last year. Sent out a letter wanting to get more proposals and got zip for a response. So go for it, I think, but, you know. Yeah. I'd make motion to allow the uh, R F P to be advertised. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded to do the request for proposal for auditing services for the city, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Hotel feasibility study proposal, okay. The Plan Commission met last week, um, there was um, interest again from, it was um, Ron Anderson and the Cobblestone Group, same general proposals, prices have gone up a lot. Um, and the, the upshot is there's interest, hard to judge how much. Um, but from the Cobblestone Development Group, it's, they said that they will not move forward unless there's a, without a, a new um, feasibility just uh, study done. And they proposed the Core Distinction Group. Um, one of the, one of the principals in that group was, is a former Cobblestone employee. Just maybe one reason that they use him. Um, Paul Schaefer would, uh, shared with us the information from the last one they did. And the Economic Development Commission was really unhappy with that proposal. It, it wasn't done very, very well, there, there wasn't a lot of um, depth to it, it was sort of a and in, in reading it, it's sort of like a pro forma that you put names in, so it really wasn't that great, so. I went looking. And that's the other one you see in front of you. Um, which is, the, the price is a bit more. Um, but it's a, just the proposal has a lot more comprehensive um, information in it as far as how they would go about gathering. But my thought is at this time, I'd rather have Paul Schaefer and the A E D C take a look at this proposal before we go any further. Um, I don't know that there's a rush for us to get this done. I don't wanna just take um, whatever the last one was because it was cheap instead of good. So I would propose that we just, we table this for our next meeting and, and have uh, the Economic Development Commission take a look at this one too.
Yeah, I think it's fair.
The one that was bad was from this core distinction. Distinction, yeah, and it wasn't that it was bad, it was just um, it seemed incomplete. It was incomplete, it didn't seem to have a lot of detail where you would look for detail. Um, and the other questions that we talked about at the, at the meeting were um, you know, what's changed since the last one? Well, it was done in twenty thirteen.
Hmm, that's been a decade.
Nineteen years ago.
Yeah, well, the thing that's changed is Highway sixty-four, the bridge, um, so things have changed. Um, Paul also reached out to the other group that was interested and they were going to be in the area at some point soon. And I think that was, I don't remember the name of that. It's a Wisconsin Minnesota brand. But it was, it was Mike Lindner was who he reached out to. Hotel R and D is the, the, the parent company, yeah.
They're courting us too. So between.
Yeah. So doing a, an assessment might be the right thing to do, no matter what. Um, but I would, when we first read out the information, we said, well, let's put it on the the agenda, but after I talked to some other people and we saw the the actual assessment, it's, I think we just would be better off giving ourselves a little time.
Do you recall what the cost was for the previous?
Previous survey or the?
Yes.
Assessment?
I think it was ten thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, this one is ten thousand, but it's discounted. Cuz their price is fifteen thousand and it's discounted. Yeah.
The A E D C paid for that.
Right.
They said they will not pay for another study through this group.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tiff dollars will pay for this, that's another added discussion.
Right.
So.
Right, and the discussion for, for the hotel was also, you know, it's been over on Birch. And a discussion about other things that would have to happen to maybe make that viable, but there's also the property that's on the south end that is owned, so. One group owns property, the other doesn't. So you'd have to find a place, so. Nothing's
Woo. Okay.
Simple, but it's, there's, there's interest, so we, we should probably pursue it in some fashion.
I agree.
I agree too, I, I am less excited about the property over there. Oh, I know. I think there's a higher use for that than a motel personally, but uh, um, well. It's a loaded opinion, but. Well, it's the property that's on Birch Street that runs along the river to Barber Park.
Okay.
It's, it's narrow. It, it just isn't. It's not deep enough. It would be as many problems for the city if it was there as if it's not there, you know? Yeah, some of the advantages are, it's essentially downtown. Walking distance to a lot of um, restaurants and, and bars and artsy and things like that, which is no small thing.
Hmm.
But. I agree. But um, it was also pointed out that, that the, the world was coming to an end when the post office moved, so. And we lived through, and we lived through it. It was multi-storied, you know, maybe you. Yes, it would have to be something, yeah.
Um, yeah.
Yeah. But parking and boat ramp and A T Vs and trailhead and there's a lot of moving parts at that spot. Yeah, but parking and boat ramp and ATVs and trailhead and there's a lot of moving parts at that spot. That you have to keep track of, so. So I would move to table this to our next meeting. Yep, there's a second. Motion made and seconded to table this hotel feasibility study to our next meeting. All in favor say aye. Carried ordinance oh four twenty twenty-three, um, amendments to Ethics Board Ordinance. So we had asked to have this. Decide until this time, so now. Explanations.
That I added was, um, the whistleblower section. They want to say something, they're, they're more protected. That wasn't in the previous version.
I, I came up with something I think needs to be changed though, um. And I wrote it down on something, but it's, uh, it's to do with the. The hiring or that, if the committee needs, uh. Needs to have legal, hire some legal folks. The last part of that, and it's, I don't remember the section and I don't know what I did with my note. But, uh, last part says, uh, the attorneys have to be vetted by the city attorney. And then the city attorney authorizes the cost of that. And I don't think that's, I, I think city council is the only one that should be able to, to, uh. Determine funds, um. Uh, you know, that, so that has to go through somehow. We, either, either the city attorney can't authorize it or. He has to submit it to council to, uh, for payment.
And that's in section D.
The, uh. Seven. Or three. Yeah.
Recommendations from the city attorney and approval by the city attorney of a contract for services.
Yeah. But he can't approve the contract for services. It has to be done by council. Well, I would, I don't know if that's proper, like, I'd move to accept this with that change. To be presented to the council, the full council, September.
No second then.
Any discussion? Hey, motion made and seconded that ordinance zero four twenty twenty-three amendments to Ethics Board Ordinance. With the change to section D, number three. Approval by city attorney changed to approval by city council. And forward to, um. This common council. All those in favor say aye. Thank you. City ca- committee needs discussion. I think that we covered that with Jeff's. No, was this something else? Okay.
Actual committees.
Okay.
Like I start, I know, I, it was I wanted the committee to hold all that training, I think, in my notes it said that Rick had wanted an emergency management.
Okay, that's, that's not what I thought this was at all.
Would be, are we looking for like specifically emergency management? Are we looking to like revive the Public Safety Committee?
Oh, I think, I think Emergency Service. Committee, because I don't really think that fits into what we had for, uh. The Public Service Committee. I think it's more than that, and I think it should include people other than in this room.
And now is a good time to promote the, the, uh. Meeting at St. and St. Croix County coming up, um.
September, yeah, fourteen.
I don't remember what day it is on the calendar.
The Thursday, right?
Maybe we could task Ben to register as many.
Already registered.
And Jeff.
And we've registered Jeff. It was a very limited size class. I think it only had fifteen, so.
But I, you know, I, Chuck can speak to this too, but I, this, this is the, the very ground level that you need to. ISO one hundred, which is, uh, basically, you know, we're humans and we have problems and. This is the start of how to, to, uh. You know, know what we're, what.
This is sort of the foundation of the language of emergency services, so it's where you have to start.
Yeah, but I, it would be really good, you know, for anybody that could come.
And what is the date on it again?
September fourteen.
To her emergency management, Gal from the county is teaching it, so.
So. In your vision of this committee, do you have like specific groups that you want represented that we should be trying to get? People from?
You know, the issue with emergency management is, uh, it should function, uh, with. It has to be set up with like the ISO folks set it up with, uh, um. A incident command type thing, uh, tha- and that doesn't involve us necessarily at all, um. And, you know, it's maybe more of a technical situation, but it's not delegated to one person. There has to be places, uh, you can fill in the blanks. Public Information Officer, uh, uh. Operations, uh, staging, et cetera, et cetera. And there, and, uh, so I think, I think, you know, there, part of this thing that, uh, is coming up in St. Croix County. Is listed as the Public Officials Guide to Emergency Management. Cause lots of us think we know what's going on, but. You know, babes in the wood when it comes to, uh, running a scene from a tornado or. A large scale incident like that. And this isn't, I mean, this isn't designed to say, well, we broke a water main on the street, so is that an? Yeah, it's an emergency, but it's not something that you'd activate, uh, you know, your emergency management team. Unless, of course, it affects the hospital and then. So I would envision, I would envision some of the ma- you know, folks would be in on that, certainly fire. EMS and our police, uh, but on a larger scale, um, you know. We have to know what our position is gonna be, uh, on that also. So, I think it's a work in progress. This is step one.
Well, I would certainly expect that you would learn more. At this session that would help define who else you might need as far as input into that committee. Because every, every community is different and who's. You know, some have big businesses that should be involved, like if it was in Bear and Jerome would be.
Yes.
You know, that's just an example, but it would, it'll vary by every one of them, so hopefully when you come back, you'll have. More information as far as how we should constitute that kind of a working group.
Lot involved. I mean, you've got. Press calls and you have to figure out where the station is, where they're ready.
Well, this is, and, and it's, you know, fire department lives by this. You know, you have command and control, you have, you know, you just have a, you have a position and you plug somebody into it. That's their role for that period of time, and that's what this has to be.
Are there any communities around here that have like a good base template for how this can look? Obviously, it's gonna be unique to Amory once we get building, but.
They have templates at the county.
For the most part, for the most part, the county is. The people that are gonna supply the money, so they get a seat at the table, but they're not gonna run our incident, you know, um. So there are, I mean, uh, emergency management wise, there are some good folks in, uh, in the area. Um, that do this all the time. And, uh, you know, plan for that, but, uh, few years ago, I would. I was at a seminar in UAL two thirty-two, if you remember Sioux City, Iowa, that, uh, when the jetliner went down. And, uh, one of the, one of the city managers was there and he, and they said, well, we had just. They had just had a tabletop like a week before that. And he said, you know, we said, yeah, okay, we'll, we'll have the press sitting over at this table and. We, you know, our incident manager will be over here. And he said the, the morning of. That incident, when, when it went down and made nationwide news, the next morning they had sixty-five. Our big RVs with the big domes under, sixty-five of them sitting in the parking lot.
How big is big?
Yeah, yeah, so. Not that we're gonna have an aircraft go down, but, uh, but, you know.
No.
You have to.
We certainly don't, and in light of what has just transpired on Hawaii, on Maui there. They're talking about their emergency systems completely failed.
Yep.
Uh, so I think it's something that we put a lot of time and energy in so that we have a system. In place and everybody plays their part.
Now that our sirens are up and running and it's just good practice.
Anything? Further?
All for the day.
Okay. Um, City Hall Hours of Operation Discussion.
We've just been looking at other municipalities and. We're gonna float the idea and see what you folks think, but, um, there's several out there that their hours are, um. And we're, this is just a thought, but seven in the morning till four thirty in the afternoon. And then Friday from eight to. The reason I say this is the traffic that we get on Fridays, they're going to the library. Just about everybody that's walking here in the city hall is, just about everybody is going to the, to the library, um. And there are several people that four thirty is too early for them to be able to get their work done and their commuters and those types of things. I would think if we're open a little bit earlier, that would afford the opportunity for the public to come in before work and get their. It's just a thought, so. Bring it out there to see what everybody thinks. There's several that are doing that. Um, we've got new rich.
Yeah, just compare it for.
Yeah.
What it, what you do now? What, no, what are your hours now, so? So.
And Friday would be your.
Eight to noon.
Eight to twelve.
We'd be open a little bit later on Friday. Started looking at just the number of people that come through here and it's lots of libraries. And there's people that come in. That can't get their stuff done because they're commuters and they're trying to. I think if we ordered it up to the more hours earlier in the day.
I'm hearing mostly pros. Do you see any cons to switching?
I think that the change will be a con at the beginning. I get up early anyway, so it'd be me coming in that much earlier, but that's the only con for me.
Well, you don't have to have the entire staff here, those entire hours though either. I mean, if you're gonna be opening an hour early, have one person coming in early.
I would, I would think that would be a good idea, but I also would think maybe, uh, Thursday night or Wednesday night or something. Cause we're, maybe we'd be open till five thirty or. Something like that, an extra hour, cause I, that is a common complaint. I can't get into city hall. I can't get to the police department to pay a ticket, cause they're never open, you know, and when I'm, when I'm off work and.
And you have different hours at the library, a couple days a week.
Currently, our hours are Monday through Friday, nine to six, and then Saturdays, nine to one.
One of the things that the library is doing is actually charting usage.
Yeah.
To actually see. During those times, what kind of, um, extra, you, extra coverage is, is giving people, so we can see, is it? Is it worth going forward? Or is it just more empty time that nobody needs to be there? But so far, I think it's, it's proving to be pretty popular.
I do too.
I think Rick's idea of about having one night, one evening open later. Really good idea.
Right.
That'd give you.
Yes.
Actually, four hours or not four, give you two extra hours for folks to come in in the morning. A half hour every day and then at least one day that we'd have an extra hour in the evening, so. Be good.
You could do it on a night when you're already gonna be here for meetings.
How much business do you actually have going on Friday afternoons now?
Or anything.
Usually all the lights are off.
Yeah, the light.
Detectors.
Yeah.
Go off and it's pretty dark from like one o'clock on.
Okay. I don't see any problem with it. It would be a matter of advising the public to let them know the change and so on.
I would just expect you that, you know, monitor and see how it actually goes. If it's gonna take a while for people to realize that there's an evening that's open, but.
Advertise it.
I would put it in the paper, and in the newsletter for the next quarter and, yeah.
I, I'd put it on the sign.
I like it. Good idea.
No action needed, okay. Um, five star marketing tourism proposal. Um, this is, uh, something that comes up every year, right?
Yes, I just got an email today and they're asking if we still wanna do it then. Well, we gotta get it approved, you know, so we're going.
I've heard lots of good things in the past year about the Polk County, uh, Tourism. Magazine, and I've looked at it with interest myself several times, so I'd, I'd be willing, I'd make a motion. I would move to. Accept that five star marketing proposal. For the nineteen hundred.
Nineteen hundred ninety dollars.
Yeah, it's, uh.
One thousand nine hundred ninety.
It's same as last year, yeah.
In the world of ads, that's really not that bad. Great, mm-hmm, yeah, no, that's a really good deal.
And did somebody make a motion?
Yes, is there a second?
I will second.
Alright, motion made and seconded that we accept the proposal from five star marketing. For an ad that is the same size as before and the amount of one thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carried? Public comment? Brad, please.
I just, this is just informational, um, you may or may not have already heard about this, but in case you didn't. Uh, the judge in St. Croix County decided in favor of the, uh, plaintiffs in a lawsuit about the Stover Trail. So the Stover Trail will be closed for horseback riding and snowmobiles for this winter. And then also, uh, in case you didn't know, at last night's county board meeting. Uh, the county board came out of closed session and voted nine to five to appeal the judge's decision. Information only.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You knew the first, I didn't know the second, thank you. Yeah, no, that's good.
They're really good at pouring sand on a rattle hole, aren't they?
All opinions expressed by them. Not necessarily that of a.
Rick, you're, you're a little saying.
Yeah, we're still live, Rick. Um, okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Opposed?